I'm going to begin by acknowledging that we are on Treaty VI territory, traditional meeting grounds and gathering space of the Cree, Soto, Blackfoot, Mayte, Dene, and Nakota Sioux. I'm also going to put up the agenda. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Are there any additions to the agenda? All right, well, hearing none, we'll just carry on with the agenda as it is. We're going to put it over to, let me just get out of... Stop share. I've got, let's see, has everybody admitted that needs to be admitted?
I've been admitting a few, so.
Oh, thank you, Jeff.
We're up to 52 now.
Yeah, I see that, that's great. Okay, so Sukrit, over to you for the minutes.
All right, so I just... Here I am. Okay, the minutes of February's meeting has been completed and put up on the OneDrive. I put it up actually on Saturday. Are there any errors or omissions that I should make note of? I know, Tom, you had emailed me just saying that there was just one extra word that I had to add in. So I will make that correction, put the final update on, but is there anything else that I may have, that anyone may have caught?
Okay, Sukrit, do you want to make a motion then?
All right, I'd like to make the motion that the minutes of, for the minutes of meeting for February.
You accepted? That's great. Do we have a seconder? John? John will second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I love that. All opposed? Any opposed? All right, carried. Okay, so now we're going to move to the, to a new feature, News from Space with Jeff Robertson. So Jeff, take it away.
Okay, this came about at the last council meeting, we were discussing some things to add to the online meeting. And Tom made a suggestion that started the gears turning inside my small little head about old time newsreels. So this is, this is what you're going to get. Also, at the end of it, Alistair and I do a thing on, kind of sick, or Wednesday nights, him on the third Wednesday of the month, and me on the first Wednesday of the month, except for this month, which has five Wednesdays, so it's going to be on the last Wednesday of this month. On, so I made a little blurb about that, so I'm just gonna share the screen. Here goes, some parts of it are a little loud, so.
The skies over Alberta, Canada light up as a visitor from outer space turns night into day on the morning of February 22nd. This fireball is seen all over the province and even in Saskatchewan. Suspected to be a meteor at first, scientists at the University of Alberta determine later it is a piece of a comet, and no fragments survive to reach the ground. The flash, however, sparked fear in children and small dogs all over the province. On February 9th, flight controllers cheer the arrival of the United Arab Emirates' home spacecraft into Martian orbit. It will study Martian weather. The Chinese Qianwen spacecraft entered orbit on February 10th. This ambitious craft contains a lander which will attempt to make it to the surface in May. Above the lander is a rover which will explore the area around the lander. Talk about a three-in-one deal. In the meantime, Qianwen will orbit Mars, taking readings and observations. NASA's Perseverance rover had no plans to orbit as it plowed directly into the atmosphere. For the past time, using computer animation and actual footage captured by many cameras of more perseverance, we can ride down to the surface of Mars with the Flecky spacecraft.
Navigation has confirmed that the parachute has deployed, and we are seeing significant deceleration in the velocity. Our current velocity is 100 meters per second.
Heat shield set.
The radar's now closed to subsonic speed, and the heat shield has been separated. This allows both the radar and the cameras to get their first look at the surface. Current velocity is 145 meters per second and an altitude of about 10 kilometers, nine and a half kilometers above the surface. The president is continuing to withstand on the parachute. We are committing on the initialization of terrain analysis and substationing on the landing engine. Our current velocity is about 90 meters per second at an altitude of 4.2 kilometers. We have confirmation that the lander vision system has produced a valid solution in part of terrain analysis. We have timing of the landing engines.
Back shell set.
83 meters per second at about 2.6 kilometers from the surface of Mars. We have confirmation that the back shell has separated. We are currently performing the divert maneuver. Current velocity is about 75 meters per second at an altitude of about a kilometer off the surface of Mars.
Zero and fifty, Bravo.
We have completed our terrain analysis and navigation. Our current speed is about 30 meters per second, altitude of about 300 meters off the surface of Mars. We have started our current velocity. According to your, I'm looking at the sky plane, the next flight plane is maneuver. Backing maneuver has started.
Tango Delta.
Touchdown confirmed. Perseverance, peacefully on the surface of Mars, ready to begin seeking the sands of past life.
After landing, Perseverance took some panoramic views of its surroundings. Wow, sand and sun. All it's missing is Ted Cruz. Moving to Cape Canaveral, Florida, tech billionaire and future Bond villain Elon Musk continues his plan to bring high-speed internet to the entire globe. Launching not one, but two Falcon 9 rockets in February containing 60 Starlink satellites apiece. After reaching orbit, the satellites are deployed one at a time. After being deployed, the satellites use their small thrusters to move into their final orbits. Not only will Starlink bring internet to the world in a two-for-one deal, they'll also be wrecking ground-based astronomy for amateurs and professionals alike. The satellite trains are also prompting many UFO reports. It's not a fleet of alien spacecraft, just an example of one guy wrecking it for the rest of us. Boca Chica, Texas. In the latest test of SpaceX's Starship, the craft they plan to fly to the moon and Mars, SN9 lifts off and soars to a height of 10 kilometers. All looks good as it makes its pitch-over maneuver prior to reorienting itself for landing. Things don't go as planned as one of the engines fails to light, and the craft does not stick to landing. Following the flight, SpaceX founder Elon Musk had this to say. And that's news from space.
We're here to introduce you to the sky, the stars, the planets, much as if we were sitting around a campfire looking up. Foremost, these sessions are all about looking, what you can see with your eyes. No telescope is required, binoculars are great if you have.
And I wanted to show that the skies in Edmonton up here at 53 degrees north latitude are quite a bit different than what's down in Toronto at 43 degrees north latitude.
I'm going to move into a segment about the sort of the path of the moon in the...
That's not the moon shining by itself, that's the reflection off the earth shining on the moon.
We won't be covering black holes, dark matter, dark energy, or how stars or planets are made or evolved. Thankfully, we have a lot of highly qualified people to come and give us talks that are monthly or meetings for that kind of thing.
And then on March 28th, we have the full moon. And it's popularly known as the worm moon, because it's the time of the year the worms start to come out from their winter hibernation. It's also known as the sap moon or the sugar moon. I'm sure that has to do with the maple syrup or maple sap running, starting to run from the maple trees, sugar maple trees. Also, the crow moon, I presume this is when the crows come back, although in my backyard, they never seem to leave. This is just, wow, so excited. And that's it.
Bravo, Jeff.
That was awesome.
Yeah, well, it took a lot, way longer than I thought it was going to, so. I don't know if I'm going to do that again.
That was great, I wished I'd popped some corn before it started. That's great, thanks very much, there were a lot of work went into that, and it was really, really well done. So, we're going to, we're going to have our main speaker now. Our presentation is by Dr. Sharon Morrison. Sharon is a professor in the Department of Physics at the University of Alberta. She received a PhD in theoretical physics from the U of A in 1997. Her research focuses on understanding neutron stars and black holes, and she uses theoretical computational modeling and observations of light and, I can't even read my own writing here, light and radiation. I can tell you that I had the privilege of traveling with Sharon and Ross Sinclair down to view the eclipse in Idaho in 2017. And I can say without reservation that Sharon is the most fun theoretical astrophysicist that I've ever known. So, without further ado, Sharon, I'm going to make you a co-host here.
Okay, and I will figure out how to share my screen once you, you need to, or you need to, oh, let's see here, I am a co-host.
And I should also add that Sharon is a past past president of the R E S C, and she was terrific in that role. Anyway, carry on.
Well, thank you so much, and of course, it really was amazing going to see the 2017 solar eclipse in Idaho. And if I'm lucky, I am hoping to go see the next eclipse in Ontario. Although the weather may not be so good. Okay, so getting the news from space was amazing, and I'm hoping that Jeff will have the energy to put together presentations like that every month. This is going to be kind of also some news from space, and this is going to be news from space about some of the black holes and neutron stars that Alistair didn't want to talk about. I won't be talking about dark matter, but of course, these things are sometimes related to dark matter. And so, this is, first of all, I just want, Tom, you should interrupt me if I'm going for too long. So just start like waving your hands or something like that, if you think I'm going too long. I'm going to try to keep this to somewhere between half an hour and 45 minutes. Okay, so if you go to the newspapers, you'll read the obituaries of wonderful people, and there's usually a story about how they died, and this tells you something about their life. And we can do the same thing with stars, and I hope this isn't too gruesome that I call this obituaries. But basically, we can look at the leftover gas that is results from the death of a star, and we can look at what happens at the things that are left over from stars to find out a bit more about how they live. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we know, and so it's going to be a little bit of just a overview of stuff that's been taught in courses for a long time. And we know that stars are born, they have a long adulthood, and then they die, and then there's kind of an afterlife. And we think of there being sort of two main ways that they go about these lives. We have these nebulas where stars are formed, and things like the Orion star forming region, for instance, is a great example of a star-forming nebula. And you can have stars forming from gas that collapses downwards into smaller regions that get hot and then turn into stars. And you can have stars that are low masses, and these are stars that might be something like our sun. We call our sun a low-mass star. And then there are high-mass stars that have masses that are eight to 10 times larger than the sun. And when I say that something is massive, I don't mean that it's large in size. What I mean is that it has a large amount of stuff in it. And so it has, if you were to think about it as having a weight, it has a really high weight, but we use the word mass. And so, when we talk about an adult star, we talk about a star which has nuclear fusion taking place in the core, where hydrogen is fusing into helium, and this releases energy and makes the star hot and keeps it shining and keeps it a stable size. So as long as it's hot, gravity won't take over and try to smush it downwards. So, stars have sort of either they're low mass or high mass. They're born in a stellar nebula, and a star like our sun will spend most of its life as a regular adult star, also known as a main sequence star. And for the sun, this is something like nine billion years or so. And then it eventually starts running out of fuel in the core, it starts to expand, it turns into a red giant. And when it's in the red giant stage, basically, it's easy for the outer layers to sort of just basically escape, and they get pushed outwards, they form something called a planetary nebula with a white dwarf left in the inside, which is just the core of the star. And we're left with one of the types of afterlives, which is a white dwarf star. Now, there's other things that can happen, you could have higher-mass stars. And higher-mass stars, as they evolve, although they're also burning hydrogen into helium in the core, they can go through more stages, and they can get higher-mass elements formed inside them. And eventually, these ones form supergiant stars. An example would be like the star Betelgeuse, which can explode in a supernova. And the basic kind of really overly short story is that there's a couple more remnants that can happen. And these are the other ways that they could have an afterlife, is either as a neutron star or a black hole. And I'll just comment that there's sort of a fourth possibility, is that the whole star could just get destroyed, and no black hole gets formed, no white dwarf or neutron star gets formed, and there's just basically not much of anything, just hot gas left over that doesn't form an actual remnant. That's also a possibility, but usually is not discussed. So, we have this picture, which I'm not going to bore you too much with diagrams, but there's something called a Hertz-Frank Russell diagram, and if you look at stars, you'll probably see this kind of thing. And it's just a way of arranging the properties of stars on a diagram. And we see that if we sort the stars so that we have dimmest stars now near the bottom and the brightest stars near the top, and we also look at the temperature and put the hottest stars on the left, the coldest stars on the right, we find that the stars that are ones that we call adult stars are stars that are called the main sequence, and they basically form this diagonal line, which tells us basically that stars of this type, the main sequence stars, if they have a larger mass, they also have a larger size, they've got a larger temperature, and they're brighter, but they have a shorter life, and they basically burn through their fuel faster if they have a high mass. And we think of this as being kind of like saying that if you take, if we just look at people, for instance, we know that for most people, they spend most of their life in the adult phase, and their childhood phase is a really short amount of time, and their time as an elderly person is a short amount of time. And so if you take a random assortment of people that's not in any particular special place, you'll typically find that most of the people are adults. And similarly, when we look at the stars, we find that about 90% of the stars that we see in the sky are main sequence stars, which tells us that this is where they spend most of their life. And you have to go to a special place, like a kindergarten class, for instance, to find lots of children, or you have to go to an old age home, which I guess we shouldn't talk about right now, to find elderly people. And so you can think of stars as having a life sort of like this. And I thought I'd just pull out a few special examples of some of these adult stars. And going from the highest-mass stars, it's, okay, so Spica is not the highest mass that you could have, but it has a pretty high mass, something like 15 times the mass of the sun. And I'll just comment that we always compare all stars to the sun. And so we think of the standard mass for a star is just the sun's mass. And so Spica's mass is about 15 times bigger than the sun's mass, which means it's also a lot brighter than the sun. And for those of you who are maybe new to observing, if you look for the Big Dipper and you look to the east at this time of the year, late in the evening, you take the handle of the Big Dipper and you arc to Arc Taurus, and then you spike down to Spica, to find Spica. And so, later on this evening after the meeting, if it's not cloudy, you can go take a look. Okay, and then going down somewhat slower, lower mass, about seven or eight times the mass of the sun, we have the star Alcayd, which is just the far end of the handle of the Big Dipper. And then we have the star Sirius A. And when we look at the star Sirius, and so you find Sirius by looking at the constellation Orion, which I just learned today, is one of its indigenous names from, I can't remember what the language is, it means the winter maker, which I thought is just perfect. Anyways, so Orion, the winter maker, if you look down below to his left, you see the really bright star Sirius, which is the brightest star that you can see from the earth. It's actually two stars, and so it's got two stars, there's A and B, and A is the one that we can actually see by eye. And so Sirius A is about three times more massive than the sun, so it's also brighter than the sun. I'll talk more about his companion B in a second. And then we have the sun, I'm not giving you a finder chart for the sun, I figure you know how to do that. And Wolf 359 was just my favorite example of a really low-mass star, mainly just because of its importance to Star Trek history. Anyways, you'll never be able to see it. Okay, so low-mass stars, at the end of their life, expand outwards. And basically, you can think of it as just basically, you've got the star, and it puffs outwards more or less gently into something called a planetary nebula. And a planetary nebula has got nothing to do with planets, and it's just this really big ball of gas, approximately a light year across. And this example over here is a really nice photograph by Tom Owen. And so this is the Ring Nebula, and you can see that it's got all this bright gas, which is basically because it's been excited by ultraviolet radiation coming from a little point of light in the center. And I was really delighted when I saw that Tom's picture actually allows you to see the little speck of light in the center, which is something called a white dwarf star. The Dunbar Nebula over here is another example of planetary nebula. So this is what our sun is going to look like in about, I don't know, about six billion years or so from now, will be something like this. So when you look at the center of a planetary nebula, you can often see a little white dot, and this is something that's called the white dwarf star. And so this is just was the small core of the star that's left behind after the outer parts expand outwards. And the Ring Nebula is one of those things that you definitely want to look at in the summertime. Now, I want to come back to Sirius. And so Sirius is two stars, A and B. The star that we see is a bright, regular main sequence star. And in this picture over here from the McDonald Observatory, you can see Sirius A is the star that you're normally seeing with your eyes. And then about five arc seconds away is this very, very faint small star, which is the companion. And so they're orbiting around each other. And there's been a lot of talk on the email list about trying to observe Sirius B, which is this very, very faint star. And I think it's probably really hard to do from Edmonton, just because it's really low altitude, because it's a low declination star, which means it's basically over the southern hemisphere. And so it's always low in the sky, which is where there's horrible atmosphere. So it's probably always going to be hard from Edmonton, but if you ever get a chance to visit Hawaii or something, I bet it looks better there. And so if anyone actually manages to see Sirius B around from Edmonton, please let me know. But if you have an X-ray telescope, like the Chandra X-ray Observatory, which orbits the earth, you can take a look at the same binary system, and what you find is that Sirius B, the star that we have so much trouble seeing in X-rays, is really bright. And Sirius A, normally the brightest star, is not as bright, you can still see it, but it's, it sort of turns the tables. And so this little thing over here is a white dwarf. And so this is probably, you can at least point in the sky to say, hey, I'm pointing at a white dwarf when you look at Sirius. I'm pointing at a white dwarf when you look at Sirius. Now, white dwarf stars can kind of just live forever and actually could have a pretty boring life. However, if they have a binary companion, so they're in a binary system and they're close enough. You can end up having a situation where gas from the companion star, which is shown in orange over here. Can be pulled onto into a disk that orbits around the white dwarf star. It's also possible to have the same sort of thing happening here, where instead of a white dwarf star, it's a neutron star or a black hole. All of these stellar undead can have companions like this with accretion discs. So this is just an artist's impression, but the interesting thing is that the accretion disc gets really bright. It can go through pulsations and get brighter and dimmer. And if any of you get interested in doing a variable star observing, cataclysmic variables. Or NOVA are just basically systems that are like this. And they're one of the most fun things to observe if you have your own telescope and you want to start doing some more serious observations. And so if you're into that sort of thing, I suggest that you look at the American Association of Variable Star Observers website and learn more about that. And I'm sure we'll have more people talking about this kind of thing later. Now, a white dwarf star has a highest mass that it can have, which is known as the Chandrasekhar mass. Which is the Chandra X-ray telescope was named after Chandrasekhar. And if you go over that mass by dumping too much mass from a companion star onto it. It can actually lead to an explosion, which is called a type one A supernova, which is really bright for a short amount of time. And this is a really nice image of the Cigar Galaxy, also known as M eighty-two. And in nineteen, in twenty fourteen, it had a supernova take place, which is basically a white dwarf dying. And it was image by Sir Franklin Lodi, using the Slue Telescope in the Canaries. And I guess, I don't know if Franklin's here tonight, but he sometimes does join us. But anyways, this is really wonderful that he was able to get this image over here. And so basically, when there's no supernova, the cigar galaxy looks pretty much like this, except you don't have this big white blob there. And that's the bright light from the supernova. So supernovas like this are observed. We we think that in our own galaxy, they take place about once every thirty years, but we don't always see them. Because the galaxy's dust obscures a lot of them. But there's one very famous supernova that was observed by Kepler in sixteen oh four. And this is his drawing and you've got this constellation of Ophiocus. One of those constellations I don't normally see and he shows the location of where he saw a bright new star. And if you look in the same place with the Hubble Space Telescope, an infrared telescope or a X-ray telescope. You'll see something called a supernova remnant and so this is hot gas that's left over from this, the death of a white dwarf star. Back in sixteen oh four that Kepler saw. Now, the thing that happens is that a type one A supernova actually tears apart. This, the white dwarf star and doesn't leave behind anything, it doesn't leave behind a neutron star or a black hole, it just leaves behind hot gas. And so there's no actual star that's left over. Now, I want to now say, we've just taken a look at one type of supernova. It was called a type one or type one A supernova, so obviously there's another type, right? So there's something called the type two supernova, which is what happens if you have a higher mass star dying. And so these are stars that are more massive than the sun, they're maybe eight times more massive than the sun. And what ends up happening is you end up with this thing called an onion skin layers, where you have iron in the core. And you have lighter and lighter elements in layers of out of there. And what happens is that iron has trouble keeping up with gravity and it will tend to collapse when you have that. And so this is perhaps what Beetlejuice looks like in the inside. And so Beetlejuice is our favorite example of a star that might go supernova soon. This, over the last year, it was fluctuating and was getting dimmer, people were getting really excited about it being a supernova. But as it turns out, it was just dust getting in the way, so really not that exciting. But still, Beetlejuice is one of those things that it could be a pretty exciting event if it does explode one day. Now, a type two supernova, what ends up happening is it's actually, it starts off with an implosion. In that the star collapses inwards and as it collapses inwards, it gets dense enough. For the protons and electrons to join together, form neutrons and you suddenly get a stiff ball called a neutron star. And you've got all this gas that's still falling inwards and it slams into the neutron star, gets sent outwards. And that basically triggers an explosion. So when a supernova takes place, you're left with this giant, big ball of hot gas. That's millions of Kelvin. And sometimes you can see a little dot in the center and that's a neutron star. In this case, it's just one pixel, we can't actually image it and so this is just an artist's impression of what the neutron star might look like, very fanciful. But it's basically the formation of a neutron star that triggers a supernova explosion. And how do we actually, how are we so sure about this? Well, one of the most important pieces of astronomical archaeology. Comes about from a really marvelous observation made by the astronomer Yang Wei-Tai. In the year ten fifty-four A.D. and he was a Chinese court astronomer who basically was doing horoscopes for the emperor. And he noticed one day that, hey, there's a. Appears to be a new star at this location where I've labeled M one over here. And so if you have Taurus, the bull over, bull over here, here's El Debrin. And then M one's about over here and you should get your own star charts to look for this yourself. Okay, so he found that there was a bright new star, he very accurately located where it is in the sky, said when it is that it happened. And the neat thing is today, when we point our telescopes there, so just the way that Tom did. Whenever it is that he did this a year or so ago, I don't know. You see a little ball of hot gas that is glowing. And not only that, we can actually see that there is a neutron star in there. And so this gives us the connection that neutron stars are born in supernova explosions. We're left with this remnant of hot gas behind and we know that this ties in there. And so it's really this marvelous bit of history that we have these really excellent documents from the astronomers. From over a thousand years ago who observed these things. And so this is. A, some more detailed pictures. I think this is Hubble, I didn't write down, I got this out of a textbook, obviously. And so you can see that this is the crab nebula in closer to true color images. And so this red over here is hydrogen and then we've got this blue light, something called synchrotron radiation. And in here, there's a couple little white dots, which are really hard to see, but we see it as something that flashes on and off. Once, like thirty-three times a second. And so this is actually a spinning neutron star with a beam of light, like a lighthouse, that gives us the flashes. And so this is one of the marvelous connections that we have between the death of stars and. The formation of a neutron star, so the neutron star is the afterlife of a high mass star. Tom very kindly gave me a few more pictures and so this is a nice picture of the Veil Nebula, which is also. The same kind of supernova remnant, it's a supernova remnant that we think was the death of a high mass star. But the thing about this one is people have been searching and have not found any form of a neutron star in it. And so we don't know if that just means that they're really hard to find, which is true. Or, you know, maybe there's a black hole in there or maybe nothing got left behind, we're not really sure what's happening, but. It's a really big deal anytime anyone finds an association between a neutron star and a supernova remnant. It actually shows that they're related to each other. So that's one of those things that you can always expect to find someone writing a paper about it. One of the really hot topics is the supernova that was seen in nineteen eighty-seven. For me, it was really important because that's when I was starting university and so it was like the talk of the town when I was a student. And ever since nineteen eighty-seven, when the supernova went off in the large Magellanic Cloud. And here's the picture over here of, this is the large, this is called the Tranguline Nebula. It's in the Large Magellanic Cloud, which we can't see over here because it's too far south. And so here's the star and it went supernova and here it is super bright. And so it could be seen naked eye if you lived in the southern hemisphere. Ever since nineteen eighty-seven, people have been publishing papers about discovering the neutron star or pulsar. And the supernova remnant, we think it probably left one, we're pretty sure about that. But the evidence is really not there and so there've been retractions, like people writing papers and having to retract them. And and then now it just like, oh, well, we maybe we've got evidence anyways. I'm still looking for for serious evidence of this, it'll be really exciting if someone actually does find it. At the moment, people are monitoring it constantly, here's some really nice images of the. The hot region where the neutron star ought to be in here, but it's, we're not getting the resolution for it. Hubble's been looking at this once every couple of years and you can see that there's expanding ring around it. And so it's a very dynamic, very much changing constantly, there's got these interesting hotspots. And so this is the kind of thing where I I expect that in the next few years, maybe we'll start actually finding something in there. So one of the things that I find very interesting and you may not, but I won't go too much into it, is just the question of. How much mass can a neutron star have? So white dwarfs have this upper mass limit called the Chandrasekhar mass. You can't have a white dwarf larger than that mass, neutron stars have a similar kind of mass limit. But we don't know exactly what it is, it's something like, it can't be more than two or maybe three times more than the sun's mass. But it's not really known that precisely. And so that's one of the things that I am really interested in my own research and trying to figure that out. And you might say, well, who cares what the mass is? Well, the the point is, is that suppose that you are looking at something in the sky. And you're not sure if it's a neutron star or a black hole and it's easy to be confused because they can have very similar properties. The interesting thing is that since neutron stars can't have a mass more than three times the mass of the sun, if you measure the mass. And you find it's larger than this maximum mass, then that tells you that you're probably seeing a black hole. And so that's one of the reasons why we need to learn a bit more about neutron stars is it can actually help us identify black holes. Now, what I want also to let you know is that during the supernova explosion, when you form the neutron star. What can happen is that if it has too much mass, it'll just end up imploding and forming a black hole. And if that happens, we don't get an explosion. Oh, and before I go there, I'll just comment that my own research is making use of this really nice little telescope called NiCER. Which is located on the International Space Station and we're looking at rotating neutron stars that are emitting X-rays from hotspots on them. And I talked more about this last year. Anyway, so this is one of the things that we use to try to figure out the masses of neutron stars and how heavy they can be. Okay, so back to black holes. So when they form, one of the ways that we think that they can form nowadays is through something called a failed supernova. Which is where the star was collapsing and it was going to form a neutron star and be the trigger of an explosion. But it basically had too much mass and it just kind of kept on collapsing inwards. And this is the first piece of evidence, it's a little bit old now, but it's twenty fifteen, but I thought I should point it out. Is this is one of the first pieces of evidence for something called a failed supernova, which might have been the formation of a black hole. And so this is an image from twenty, two thousand and seven, where you have a star here, a pretty high mass star. And it was being monitored and now you don't see anything. And so it's thought that basically this was a failed supernova and now there's a black hole there. So there, I'm hoping that we're going to be seeing much more evidence of this sort of thing in the future. And just, just to let you know, there's another kind of weird supernova called a pair instability supernova. And this is if you have a really high mass star. You can actually have a situation where you don't even form a black hole. And the star just basically has so much energy that it forms matter, antimatter pairs. That then annihilate each other, it can actually just rip apart the star and just leave you with hot gas behind. And no black hole, no neutron star, nor no white dwarf. And so this is like another type of way that a star can 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 die, not leaving behind anything. Okay, so I just want to kind of remind you how it is that we actually observe black holes. So remember, a black hole is something that doesn't allow light to escape, but it has gravity. So we can see the effect of its gravity on things that are close to it. And so the classic way that we find black holes is that we have a black hole at the center of this disk over here. And it has companion star, material from the companion star is pulled towards the black hole that orbits. The 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 black hole and we see X-rays from the disk. The other thing is that by looking at how the star orbits, we can figure out the masses of the two. And so the classic one is Cygnus X one and observations of the companion star by Tom Bolton. Who is a professor at University of Toronto, who sadly recently died. He confirmed this in nineteen seventy-one and then it was turned into a great rock song by the band Rush in nineteen seventy-seven. And I'll just comment that my colleague Greg Simakoff, who would normally have the office next door to me if we were at the university. He's recently been observing this black hole and measured the distances and masses more accurately and found out that it's actually more, more massive than what people thought. So this is kind of the classic way since the seventies that we've been discovering black holes. But I want to talk about a different way that people have been observing black holes. And this is the interesting thing, that if you have two black holes or two neutron stars or two white dwarfs in a binary system. The gravity is constantly changing and this leads to the emission of something called gravitational radiation, which takes energy away from the binary system. And makes the two objects spiral closer and closer to each other. And as they do this, they start moving faster and faster and then they merge and form a larger object. And so this is an idea that people have have theorized for quite a long time. This is just a computer simulation that I just showed you, but the amazing thing is that this kind of system has been actually observed. By something called a gravitational wave detector called LIGO, which is called the Laser Interferometric Gravitational Observatory. Which observes the mergings of black holes and neutron stars into larger objects. It doesn't actually get images, but what it actually sees is variations in the distances between objects. Like masses and that's a whole different talk to really talk about how they do this. But they've been observing lots and lots of these merging black holes and a couple merging neutron stars as well. And so this is kind of a complicated diagram, but this is a way of sort of showing the different masses. And so we have low mass objects, like one solar mass or one times the sun's mass and something that's ten times the sun's mass. Or a hundred and sixty times the sun's mass, neutron stars are down at the bottom. And then we have the purple dots show black holes that have been discovered through their X-rays. And this is like Cygnus X one is one of these. And then when we see two black holes merging, they're shown in blue and they're shown as two objects that come together with an arrow. To make a higher mass object. Up higher and so this is a sort of a schematic that shows the different things that have been discovered recently. And this is just in the last couple of years. And we're now at the point where we've actually discovered more black holes through merging systems than we have through X-ray observations. Now, a couple of really interesting things here is, for instance, it was discovered that there were two neutron stars that came together, emerged. And they have a mass which is a little bit under three times the mass of the sun. And so the question is, did they form a neutron star or a black hole? And the question is, we don't actually know. And the question is, we don't actually know. And it depends on how much mass a neutron star can actually have. Another interesting case is this one over here where we had a high mass object with a mass of about twenty times the mass of the sun, which is a black hole. And a low mass object merged with it. And this thing has a mass, it's something like two point five times the mass of the sun. And so these two things came together and made a larger black hole. And what we don't know today is, was this thing that merged with the higher mass black hole, was it the smallest known black hole? Which it would be. Or is it the heaviest known neutron star? And this is just like, for me, that is like one of the most exciting questions around today. And I'm hoping that we know that one day. Another super interesting system is this one over here where we have two black holes with masses that are close to eighty times more massive than the sun. So this is pretty heavy. And they came together and made a really heavy black hole. That's about a hundred and sixty times the mass of the sun. And this is pretty big. And what's interesting is that it had been thought that you can't have eighty solar mass black holes because the stars that would have produced them would have died in a pair instability supernova and would have been ripped apart and wouldn't have actually formed a black hole. And so this is telling us one of two things. It's either telling us that the theories about pair instability supernovas are just wrong. And maybe black holes with masses eighty times larger than the sun are actually possible. Or maybe all of these black holes were formed from the mergers of smaller black holes. And maybe there's like this snowballing effect where you get two small black holes merging to form a medium sized black hole. And then two medium ones come together and make a bigger one. And it's a slow hierarchy like that. So I'm hoping that maybe ten years from now, we'll be able to answer that kind of question better. Now I just want to quickly go to supermassive black holes. Supermassive black holes are formed at the centers of galaxies. And these things have masses that are between millions times more than the sun's mass or up to hundreds of billion times more than the sun's mass. And basically you can think of them as being like a donut that orbits around the black hole. And we see the donut, which is emitting X-rays and radio waves. And this latest Nobel Prize in Physics in twenty twenty was given out to three physicists and/or astronomers. Roger Penrose, nothing to do with supermassive black holes, just for all the wonderful things that he did about singularities. But it was also shared between Reinhard Genzel and Andrea Gesz for their observations of the black hole at the center of our own galaxy known as Sagittarius A star. And so this is basically the Nobel Prize winning observation. This is observations going back from the nineties of the center of our galaxy, which is located where the star is over here. And so that center is in the constellation Sagittarius. That's the center of our Milky Way galaxy. The center is called Sagittarius A star. And they've been observing the stars orbiting around that object. And they've been doing that since the nineties. And from this observations, they can actually figure out the mass that's within here. And they can find that it's actually four million times more mass than the sun, located in a really, really tiny area. So, and so that's basically what the latest Nobel Prize was for. And so it's the observation of the supermassive black hole at the center of our own galaxy. Now, the last way I want to talk about observing black holes is through gravitational lensing. And the idea of gravitational lensing is just that light travels on curved paths if there's a high concentration of mass. And so for here on the Earth and we're looking at some distant object, which might be this orange blob over here. And there's a lot of mass in a galaxy in between ourselves and the orange blob. Light from the blob will be able to travel around and over the galaxy or whatever is in here. And could go over, it can go under. And if we trace the rays back, it looks like the light is coming from a ring. And we call this thing an Einstein ring. And this is an example of gravitational lensing. And so this leads us to the question of what would it look like if there was a black hole between us and the constellation of the Winter Maker, also known as Orion? Well, so this is a picture of, this is a drawing of just what the constellation looks like. We've got Orion here, look at the three belt stars. And if there is a black hole in the way, which there isn't, but suppose if there were, what we would see is that there'd be a region, a black circle where we wouldn't be able to see anything. But we would be able to see all of the stars that are behind the black hole because we would see multiple images and we'd see this distorted picture. And so we would still see all of the three belt stars, but we'd see multiple images of the three belt stars. And we'd see multiple images of Sirius and Betelgeuse. And so what we would see is all of the stars would be visible to us, but we would see them in a weird, distorted way. Now, that is kind of a hard thing to imagine, but now you could sort of say, well, suppose that we've got a black hole over here and it has an accretion disk around it. Well, light on the other side of the black hole from us should be able to travel on a curved path that comes over and around the black hole. And so this picture over here that I'm showing you, which is just an artist's impression of what an accretion disk around a black hole might look like, isn't quite correct because it assumes that light's always traveling in straight lines. And so we should be able to see the back of this accretion disk should arch over the black hole. And we should basically see a dark region and we should see light around it. And so the first computer simulation of this sort of thing was done surprisingly in nineteen seventy nine, when they didn't have proper output. And so the physicist Jean Pierre Lumineau had to use white India ink dots from the computer outputted numbers and painted a picture of what his computer program was telling him. And basically this shows you that the back of the accretion disk arches over. And this might look familiar because this was used in the movie Interstellar, basically. So that is the artistic and the theoretical idea. And the question is, can you actually see this? And so there's this marvelous giant elliptical galaxy M eighty seven, which is in the constellation Virgo. And so it's, it's part of the Virgo cluster of galaxies, which some people here may, might observe. And in the very core of this galaxy, so this is a giant elliptical galaxy. It's got this little, over here, this little light over here is a jet coming out, which suggests that there could be a black hole in there. And this black hole in this galaxy are already quite famous because in nineteen ninety four, the Hubble Space Telescope, one of its first observations was of the interior of this galaxy. And they showed that there was an accretion disk. And here's the jet. And they could measure the speed of gas moving around the center. And from this, they were able to figure out that there's a supermassive black hole in there with a mass that's somewhere between, it's about six billion times more mass than the sun. So this is way bigger than our own supermassive black hole. So this was already pretty exciting stuff back in the nineties, which is when I was a graduate student. I remember like, wow, Hubble could do real stuff. That's cool. Okay, so that was like the first idea that there's a black hole there. But maybe we could actually get a bit more. And so these are some X-ray images of the central region of that galaxy. And you see there's a lot of X-rays, there's this little bit of a jet coming out of there. And when they use a radio telescope, in particular, it's called the Event Horizon Telescope. And they, they need to use radio waves to get the resolution in here. They can actually reconstruct an image of the center, which shows that there is this black region over here, which is surrounded by a ring of light. And the interpretation of this is that this black region over here is what's called the black hole shadow, which includes the event horizon of the black hole hidden away in there. And then gas from the accretion disk and the jet are being bent into a circle, which sort of arches over and below the black hole, forming this ring. And so this is the first time that it's actually been possible to see something that actually sort of shows that black holes really do have an event horizon, which is a really remarkable thing. So this was published in April of twenty nineteen. And, and it came from observations that they actually made in twenty eighteen. And this involved telescopes from around the world that were observing it. Now, they've, the same team has also been observing the black hole at the center of our own galaxy to try to do the same kind of observation. And the problem with observing our own black hole is that it is closer to us. But it's also smaller than M eighty seven's black hole. And so the size of the image will be similar. But this, our own black hole is rapidly varying. And because we're so close to it, there's gas and dust in the way. And it really makes it hard to observe it. And just basically because the galaxy itself gets in the way. So I haven't heard anything yet, but I'm hoping that we're going to be soon hearing about the observations of our own galaxies. It's black hole. Okay, so this has been sort of a whirlwind trip through some of my favorite things about how stars live and die. And mainly about how they die. And just to remind you, in case you fell asleep for a little while there, stars die. Sorry about that, they do. And they leave behind either a white dwarf star, a neutron star, a black hole, or sometimes nothing at all, but a bit of hot gas. And we like to observe these explosions and mergers of, of the stars and the remnants. And this helps us understand what's happening in the stars and gives us more information about them. And the last few years have been giving us a lot of really amazing information about black holes and neutron stars. And I predict that we'll be seeing a lot more really exciting discoveries in the next few years as well. So I'm going to stop there. Thank you so much.
Sharon, that was, that was just great. I'm wondering if, if anyone, yes, let's just give her a round of applause.
Do we have some questions now?
We have questions for Sharon.
And we see, woo, Luca tells me eleven arc seconds now. Is that the distance between Sirius A and B? It's eleven arc seconds? Still difficult. How long was Cigar Galaxy Supernova significantly visible? I'm not totally sure how long that supernova was visible. It was on the order of, it would, it would be a couple of weeks is what I would think. And you know that I'm unable to sing the Rush song. It goes something like
So Sharon, I've got a question for you. Are we in the spring, still in the springtime of the universe? Are there more stars that are being born than are dying?
Well, it's kind of, interesting question there. In our own galaxy, there's a similar number of stars being born as, as dying. But there are galaxies like elliptical galaxies, which basically don't have very much star forming, formation taking place anymore. And so, but then you also have, like, so elliptical galaxies are kind of almost dead. But then you have starburst galaxies where there's lots of galaxies coming about. So I don't know, I guess, I guess this is a pretty good time. You know, when you sort of think about, is this a good time? And the nice thing is that our sun was born out of the ashes of a previous generation of stars, which means that there is a reasonable amount of iron and carbon and oxygen, which could then be used to form the Earth. And so this is a really good time, you know, in order for life to evolve, it probably needed to be around this time. So and let's see here. And oh yes, Muse also has an interesting song called Supermassive Black Hole. I never understood the lyrics, but anyways, John, if you could explain them to me. Glenn has the question of what role do quark stars play? Are they too unstable to survive long? Quark stars are interesting. I usually think of quark stars as a subclass of neutron stars. And so when I say neutron stars, I'm kind of actually including the possibility of quark stars. And what's a quark star? Well, the idea is that a neutron star, the neutrons are so close to each other that you can't really, each neutron is formed up of, out of three quarks. And you can't really think of the quarks as being identified with one neutron anymore. Instead, it's kind of just a sea of quarks. And that's probably happening in the cores of all neutron stars. But the question of whether you could have the whole object be a quark star is a possibility. But I'll just comment that our latest observations have been making it seem like quark stars are actually, like, like pure, pure quark stars probably are not actually seen in nature. Unfortunately. And any guesstimate of what percentage of dying stars become black holes versus their other outcomes? Oh, you know what? White dwarfs are still the most likely thing to happen. And that's just because low mass stars are way more common than high mass stars. And so the vast majority of stars have masses that are like the sun's mass and lower. And they all form white dwarf stars. And so it's really only a small fraction of stars that are high enough mass to form neutron stars. And then an even smaller number form black holes. And I'm not going to guess at a fraction, but it's, it's like, probably like less than one percent are, are forming black holes there. Quark star there, yeah, good. And let's see here. Do you expect a typical black hole to be spherical in energy around it or more cylindrical caused by energy jets blasting out from opposite sides? And so so black holes that are isolated don't have a companion star. They are probably more likely just to be spherical stars. They aren't going to have anything accreting onto them. And so they're just going to be spherically symmetric and and sort of kind of boring and hard to see. While it's the ones that have a companion that are going to be having an accretion disk around them, which will generally lead to gas that's overflowing, which forms the jets. And I'll just comment that the jets don't come from inside the black hole. They come from basically because of the accretion around it. And so the, the, the black holes that have a companion are going to be asymmetrical, have jets. There's a good chance actually that a lot of the black holes out there are ones that we actually can't see, in which case they might actually be kind of dull spherical ones. I don't think there's any good estimate though of what that is. And do the gas clouds like the Orion Nebula tend to stay as a unit to generate several generations of stars? Oh, interesting question. Now we're getting into more complicated things. We need a real expert like, say, Eric Roselowski to tell us more about that. But the Orion Nebula is forming both low mass stars and high mass stars. And so the high mass stars have a really short lifetime, like only like ten million years. And so you can have a few cycles of that sort of thing taking place. But as far as low mass stars, they're I don't think that there's likely to be many generations of low mass stars forming in a place like the Orion Nebula. And, oh, good, Franklin is here. Thank you for taking that great picture of the Cigar Galaxy. And actually, but just going back to Orion, if you just think about the fact that the sun takes two hundred million years to do one full orbit around the center of the Milky Way. And so that's kind of the time scale to start messing up star associations. And so our sun is like And so our sun is like nowhere close to where it was born 5 billion years ago. It's like gone around the Milky Way like 20 times or so. And, and then John asks the question that I can't really answer. Is our universe inside a giant black hole? And that's like one of those things that there are some similarities with the whole concept of the expanding universe and Big Bang Theory and black holes. They're kind of very different. So you kind of have to, for a black hole, you kind of have to have sort of a concept of what's outside the black hole versus inside. But it's kind of a hard to answer question. Okay.
All right, Sharon, I want to thank you very much for coming on and, and coming in sort of on short notice. And you did a fantastic job. So let's say, give her a big hand again, everybody.
Well, thank, thank you for letting me talk and for hanging around.
Oh, you're awesome.
I will.
Go ahead. All right, so we're going to move on now to, to John. Where's John? John Stolti, are you? I can't see you.
Oh, yeah, there you are.
Okay, so I'm going to turn, I'm going to co-host you.
Okay.
And, okay, you're on.
Okay, and then I am going to share my screen here. Another short presentation. So, yeah, thanks for having me on. I'm John Stolti. I am the Observing Group Director at the RASC Edmonton Centre. And I've been tasked with encouraging our membership to do some of the visual observing certificates offered by the RASC to split it up so I don't babble on forever. I decided to do the beginner visual observing certificates to spotlight today. And that's the Observe the Universe program and the Explore the Moon program. So these are good introductions to observing. If people have, if people like lists and want some direction to what to look for or what to observe, I think you can do it with just a logbook or you can do sketches if you so please. Oh, yes, I'm going to try to encourage everyone to do it by actually presenting the certificate so they get the recognition. Our center has kind of fallen off of giving or encouraging the visual observing certificates. I know that we put quite an emphasis on the astrophotography certificates. So we're going to try to push that tide the other way. So recently in February, Murray Hunt, he did the Explore the Moon certificate. I believe the telescope version, but that's not actually on the certificates. I'm not sure. But yeah, congratulations to Murray Hunt. Good job on that. I think he also did the Observe the Universe earlier. So we didn't have things figured out enough to get that going, but to present that. And obviously, we would have presented in person had we been at the Telescope of the Science, but it's Zoom, so he also got one mailed and I think a pin comes as well. So, and we've added on to edmontonrask.ca.com, sorry, a spot for us to find more information about the observing certificates and to submit your application to me to get verified. So you too could have a beautiful pin or, or a, an award to put on your wall. So there's also the Halifax Center. Oh, this is coming up, yeah. The Halifax Center actually put together some information on it as well. So I figured I'd just let John Reed do the talking for me.
I don't think you clicked share sound when you. I think you have to start all over again.
Tell us if this works.
Anything?
I'm also a member of the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada, a charitable organization with over 5,000 members across Canada. The RASC.
Are you guys hearing that?
Hmm, it's quite dim. Faint, sorry.
Oh, it's all good.
Did I try doing a stop share? Sorry, I hadn't planned that out. Let's. Nope, what's that? Oh, share sound, yes.
Hi, I'm John Reed, amateur astronomer and author of the 50 Things to See with a Telescope book series. I'm also a member of the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada, a charitable organization with over 5,000 members across Canada. The RASC or RASK does a lot of public outreach on astronomy. But we also have fun observing the night sky with our eyes, binoculars and telescopes of all sizes. This is one of three videos exploring the many observing programs the RASC has to offer. In this video, we'll look at two beginner level programs, Explore the Universe and Explore the Moon. So why follow observing programs and earn certificates? Having a goal focuses your attention and enriches your observing experience. And it provides a sense of accomplishment. When you complete a program, the RASC will issue you a certificate. Some certificates come with a colorful lapel pin. Details on all the programs can be found online. See the video description for more details. Now let me tell you about the beginner level programs. For these, you only need your eyes, binoculars, or a small telescope. You do not need a special observing location with dark skies. Your backyard is fine, even if you live in the city. Let's now discuss the Explore the Universe program. Explore the Universe offers a certificate and pin. It is a beginner level program, open to all. You don't even need to be a RASK member. Most objects require just the unaided eye or binoculars, but some objects may require a small telescope. Here's how to get started. You'll need to download three things from the RASC website. A list of objects, observing report forms, and an application form. For additional help, an Explore the Universe guidebook is available to purchase from the RASC store. The program explores 110 objects divided into five categories. Constellations and bright stars, the moon, the solar system, deep sky objects, and double stars. Only half the objects in each category need to be observed. The choice is up to you. When you're finished, present your logbook to your local RASC centre for validation, and they will issue you your certificate and pin. Now we'll talk about the Explore the Moon program. Explore the Moon offers certificates for two versions. One for binoculars and the other for small telescopes. Explore the Moon is a beginner level program based on the information found in the RASC Observer's Handbook. After completion, you'll be prepared for more advanced lunar observing, such as the Isabel Williamson Lunar Observing Program. Explore the Moon is great for learning how to use your binoculars or telescope for astronomy. It is suitable for the urban observer with no worries about light pollution. This program can be completed from your backyard. The binocular program includes 11 lunar seas, 26 prominent craters, and three mountain ranges for a total of 40 objects marked on a single map. The telescope program includes 16 lunar seas, 68 craters, 16 mountain ranges and valleys. There is a total of 100 objects marked on included charts. Also included are mirror reverse charts for telescopes that flip the view from left to right. When you're finished, present your logbook to your local RASC centre for validation, and they will issue you your certificate and pin. So that's it for the beginner level observing programs. Be sure to watch the other two videos in this series where I tell you about the intermediate level and advanced level observing programs that the RASC offers.
Okay, so there you go. So looking forward to getting flooded with all sorts of logbooks from everyone else's observing programs. Also a plug for Wednesday, two days from now, we have the observers meeting. So you can join in with that. It's an informal discussion between observers in Edmonton Centre. All right, thank you.
Thank you, John. You did a great job. Really, really great presentation, much more than what I was expecting. Much appreciated. And thanks again for stepping up and, and taking care of this and publicizing this very important aspect of astronomy and, and observing in Edmonton. So, well done. Are there any questions? Are there any questions for John? Okay, well, hearing none. Again, thanks very much, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Rick and Susan, are you around? Do I see you anywhere? There you are.
You're here, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, you have an announcement to make. You need to be made a co-host or would you just like to make your announcement?
It's just a reminder, many of you may have seen the stardust already for March, and we have a notice in there. We are proceeding with planning for the 2021 Northern Prairie Star Party. And the first thing that we've had to do is to book the northern part of the Black Nugget Lake campground, which we have done. And we're going to keep it booked right up until five days before the event. And, you know, if any sites need to be canceled at that time, we would cancel them. But what we're asking is if anybody is interested in, in reserving a site to basically email us at npsp@edmontonrask and let us know, and we'll put you on the list, first come, first served. As you know, there's 17 sites, and four of those are powered sites, including the site number eight where the BNLO, and we call it the observing area, is located. Currently, that group site is closed due to COVID. But, you know, we were basically optimistic that the campground is, is going to be operating all its sites that it can. And currently, right now, all of those sites, the individual sites are all bookable, but the group campsites are not. So I've already, in response to the article, received requests from four people to, to book the powered site. So we're, we're basically on a priority list. And we're hoping that those sites at the site camp, group site number eight, will be opened up because that gives us three power poles and potentially six parties in there. And then we have three other powered sites, 90, 91, and 92, around the northern camp, Cook Shelter. And by the way, Cook Shelters are also closed at the campground, as well as the showers. You use the outdoor toilets at your own risk. So that's what's going on at the moment. So we would just encourage anyone who's interested to get in touch with us and let us know that you're interested in, in setting aside a site. And then we'll take stock as the summer proceeds. Last year, it was a bit of a, a gong show because the sites were bookable, then they weren't, then they were partially bookable and everything. And we're just, we're basically just reserving that area for our annual event. Mark Waldman, who is an optical engineer with the James Webb Telescope Project, is still keen to come and speak in person. He's working through the logistics of that. Whether or not he can cross the border, we'll see later on. But the first thing was to basically leave, let the site be booked. And I think for many of you that have been active, even more active at Blackfoot and other places over the last year, this might be an opportunity for you to really go out and enjoy that campsite. You'd have to pay the, the rate, the going rate. But at least we are reserving that as an opportunity for our Edmonton Centre members to take advantage of that time. The dates are September 7th to 11th. And we have booked the Friday and Saturday nights for the unpowered sites and the Wednesday through the Saturday nights for the powered sites. So I look forward to hearing from you. And we'll give you an update in terms of what's happening as we move through, as Rick calls it, this COVID fog. I don't know if you have any questions, but it was just basically to draw your attention to that.
Are there any questions for Susan?
I have a question. The email that they can contact you on, just to confirm, is that npsp@edmontonrask.com?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and thanks very much. We certainly appreciate the way you take over and organize this every year. It's a, it's a, it's just a linchpin event on, on the calendar. So here's hoping that we can, we can get it done this year as well.
Yeah.
And excellent. And Rick, we're missing your photos, man. Let's get some, get some in.
Well, I, I might say it's a little bit of a plug, but if you, if you've looked at the stardust, I actually put an article in on the Mars Perseverance Rover. And it really intrigued me, all the, the deluge of photos from the mass cam. And I've been able to make a number of 3D stereo pairs out of the, from the mass cam photos. And so if you have those red and blue anaglyph glasses, they're easy to, to, to get. You can see Mars and the Jezero Crater in 3D.
Cool.
Thanks for giving me the nudge, but I will send Abdur some of my astro images for next month.
Fantastic. Yeah, yours, yours are so good. I'm looking forward to seeing them.
Thank you very much.
So we'll just, it's a nice segue over to Abdur. And we're going to finish up tonight with Astro Imaging Corner. So Abdur, I will make you a co-host.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, is my audio coming through? Okay?
It is.
Okay, welcome to Astro Imaging Corner. So we had quite a few entries today. So we'll start with the one from Alister. This is Messy35. the one from Alistair. This is Messy35. And you can also see the more distant NGC 2158 right at the bottom of the screen here. I should also see if I can make this full screen. Okay, so you've got Messy35 right up near the top left of the screen and near the bottom of the screen. You can see NGC 2158, which is quite in the fainter. And Alistair took this with his new scope slash lens, which is the 40 millimeter Ascar F4.5. And so it's taken from the suburbs with no filter, and this was a total of 39 four-minute exposures at ISO 200. So very nice shot, Alistair. Okay, next one's also from Alistair. This is Comet 141P. And this is one of more than a dozen faint comets floating in our skies currently, according to Alistair. And 141P MacCall's true is the brightest component of the comet, which is visible over here. And it has broken into several pieces at each of its last three returns. And next time in five years, this will likely be fainter than 16th magnitude and probably considered deceased. Deceased. And this was taken by Alistair with the University of Athabasca's C14 telescope. And up next is an image from Arnold from this past weekend at Blackfoot Lake staging area. And Arnold took this with the Astrotac 8-inch RC and his ASI 294 MC Pro camera. And Arnold was using the Astronomics CLS CCD Light Pollution Filter. And this was on the EQ6R Pro mount, which was guided with the ASI 120mm camera. And this was a total of only six exposures of two minutes each at a gain of 120. And it was processed in Deep Sky Stacker and PixInsight. Very nice shot, Arnold. And this is another shot from Arnold. This one was actually taken with his cellphone, the iPhone 8 Plus, attached to a telescope, of course. So this was imaged with the Astrophysics Traveler 105 refractor using IP's projection. And the IP was a Telview 9 millimeter Nagler. So you have the IP's connected to the telescope, and then you attach your phone to the IP's. So very, very sharp details. And the next one over here is a close-up of the same view. So this is showing the crater Aurontius in the lower left, the crater Huggins and Miller. Miller is the one with the central peak. It's this one over here. You can see quite a few shadows around, and then you can see the crater Nasiruddin and Sawsur. I haven't done my Explore the Moon certificate yet, so I cannot be named like the five big craters on the moon. So I'm not sure about most of the smaller ones yet, but I will get to that soon. And the next image is from Murray Paulson. This is an image of the Mercurian's chain from March 6. And this is a stack of 44 images for a total of one hour and two minutes of exposure time. And Murray was using ISO 1600 on his Canon ADD and the Takahashi E in one mount. And the scope used was the Takahashi Sky 90 with an F4.5 flat mirror and compressor. And Murray processed this image in Deep Sky Stacker and made the final adjustments in Corel. So I believe that is M84, and that brightest one moves M86 with a companion galaxy. And then these are the eyes over here. So very nice shot. Our next image is from John. This is the ISS Solar Transit. And you can see the International Space Station right over here, and you can see the solar panels on the side. Pretty small, but it was actually over 1,000 kilometers away at that time and relatively low in the sky. So it's amazing we were able to see anything at all. And John was using his Canon T6 DSLR at prime focus on his 10-inch F4.7 GoToDob. And John was using the white light solar filter, and then the image was touched up a bit in Jim. And this is a video of the same encounter. I believe it's slightly slowed down. There we go. So you can see the International Space Station rushing right across there. Let's play that again. So it looks about, maybe slowed down maybe two or three times, but it's quite an amazing capture. Okay, how do I make this go away? Okay, so our next shot is from Dave Muscle. This is the Orion Nebula. Okay. That looks like we have a comment. Oh, yes, someone's asking, did a satellite go through Murray's picture? So that's the previous image over here. Yeah, it looks like that was a satellite that went right through the middle over there. Okay, so yeah, this is from Dave Muscle. This is the Orion Nebula. This one was a product of two hours of darks taken in late January, sorry, two hours of data taken in late January with the Explore Scientific 127 ED Epo Chromatic Refractor and the L-Enhanced Filter. And it was processed entirely in PixInsight. So that was an amazing dynamic range, really nice colors, and it has some very, very good control over the star sizes. So amazing job with that. Also see the trapezium inside, and anyone who was imaged Orion knows how difficult it is to get the trapezium as well as the detail of the outer regions. So great job, Dave. And our next image is another one from Dave. This is of the Sod region in Cygnus. And the southern region was captured last November with just one hour's worth of data using a William Optics FLT110 Epo Chromatic Refractor. And this was similarly processed in PixInsight. And the next one is from Ray Weems. This is the Horsehead Nebula. And this was a total of 25 exposures of three minutes each, taken with a William Optics 132 millimeter reflector with a .8 focal reducer. And the camera was a full-frame QHY367. And this image was processed in Lightroom, and it was taken on January 15. And the next one from Ray is the Comnebula. This was taken with the same William Optics 132 with the .8 reducer and the full-frame QHY367 Pro camera. And this was from January 9. And this was a set of 300-second and 180-second exposures. And it was captured in SharpCap and processed in Lightroom. So you can see the Comnebula to the right over here, and I believe Hubble's variable nebula is somewhere just below. Can't quite see it in the image, but yeah, very nice region of the sky. And we're close to the end. This was one that I got this past weekend when we were at Blackfoot Lake staging area. I pretty much spent the entire night there imaging a lot of different targets, but my computer has decided to die today. So I wasn't able to actually process anything other than these two images. And this one was with my Fuji XT2 camera and a Samyang 135 F2 lens that I just purchased. So this was the first real test of the lens, and this was a total of 80 exposures of 30 seconds each for a total of 40 minutes of exposure time. And all exposures were taken in ISO 6400, and I used dark flats and dark flats for calibration. And this is cropped about halfway in. So there was some distortions on the bottom of the lens wide open at F2, but I'm working on shimmying that a little bit to fix that. And this was taken with the same setup. This is with the Fuji XT2 and the Samyang 135 F2 lens at F2. And this one was a total of 65 exposures of 30 seconds each. So for a total of what, 32 minutes of exposure time. And in this image, you can see the flaming star nebula near the bottom right. Just to the left of that is the spider nebula. And above that is the fly nebula. And then to the left, we have, I believe, this is the Pinwheel Cluster and the Starfish Cluster over here. And then a lot of little fuzzies here and there. And just a reminder that our next Astro Imaging Community Cafe is coming up on March 17. And we will need some speakers for that. So if you want to do a presentation on any topic, please let me know. Send me a message or Facebook or just whatever way it works. Just let me know what you might be interested in doing. So we do need a couple of speakers for maybe two half-hour presentations and maybe a few for some 15-minute presentations. And for anyone who just wants to attend, you know, these are always a great chance to learn about astroimaging. So if you want to hone your skill or see what everyone else is up to, yeah, you're welcome to join. So it'll be always very fun to do. And that's all for tonight. So thank you very much for anyone, to anyone who sent in some images, and thank you very much for your time. And I'll send that back to you now, Tom.
All those pictures were awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Abdur. Another, another great job. Sorry about your computer dying. But you know, Murphy was an astroimager, right? All right, well, listen, thank you, everybody. This is another great meeting. I've got nothing else unless everybody, anyone else has anything. I'm going to use my chair as prerogative and adjourn the meeting. And clear skies, everyone. We'll see you next month.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Good night.
Take care, everyone.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Night, everyone. Thanks, Tom.
Good night. Thanks, Tom.